Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to this public, which stands as foundation under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Would I have a motion to open the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five, public meeting of the Sag Harbor zoning board of appeal?
I'll make a motion to open the meeting. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are, Carrie, are we waiting for anyone else or? Oh, Damon, Damon is on Zoom.
Yeah, we're doing, thank you.
Oh, okay. Great. Um, so tonight, we're, as usual, going to be following our procedural resolutions, which allow applicants ten minutes to address the board and the public three minutes for response. Additional time can be given at the discretion of the board. The first item on the agenda are the minutes of the October twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting. Did everybody have a chance to look through the minutes?
Yes, yes.
Any comments or?
No.
No, okay, I had one typo that I gave to Carrie. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, next on the agenda is Corstonus requiring action. There is not, okay. So that leads us to old business and first, the first item on the old business is one thirty two Jermaine Avenue. Great.
Thirty six West Orange Street, Suite two oh two, for the applicant.
Great, thank you.
We have had a change of ownership while that paperwork has been submitted. I did submit at the last meeting, discussed the proposed hot tub and moving that at least five feet from the property line. And we have done that and secured that survey accordingly. I don't believe that that, that less than we've learned at any time, or the fifty feet that are front yard. Landscaping plan has been.
Do we? Have they?
Yeah, it was the landscape.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing who's speaking. It's a little staticky.
Um, the applicant or the board members or everybody?
Just the applicant.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, same for me, yeah.
Just remember that the, it's above you.
Can you hear the little chatter now?
No, I, that's what I was, yeah.
I don't think we got a new survey on this.
We did.
We, I'm talking about we. We up here.
I don't, I don't remember getting anything new on this at all.
The survey. It is Carrie.
I know.
And here it comes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oops. Um, so, and so the only change is that the, the hot tub is now five feet away from the property line?
We shifted it further away from the lot line. I really thought they added a letter that was supposed to file from the neighbor.
I thought that the last time we spoke about this, we talked about putting it back next to the garage or this, whatever that is, studio, the art studio.
The problem there is that we would require an additional variance because we're putting it in the rear yard.
I don't know what people think, but that's awfully close to the property.
Well, I was trying to, I was hoping it could just not require variance because of that code.
There, you see those leaching pools, health effect, the sanitary systems in that area, so it would be very difficult to locate it. Anywhere other than here, we've located. I didn't get the impression of that, I didn't feel that there was any objections. Talk about a hot tub that's sort of being on those structures that is not necessarily a permanent structure, but if you want, like, one that could cross out every ten years once again.
But we did also, I know we also discussed that it is a noise element.
Yeah, and it's not a.
We do have a letter from a neighbor stating that you had no objection to the.
Yeah, but there may be a, there may be a new neighbor in there next week. It's also a nuisance. Sure.
Um, there is substantial landscaping. There's a house that's probably fifteen feet high and probably about ten feet wide for two properties. And as I said, they had some substantive conversations, prior owner did, as well as the new owners, which our owner of the adjacent property continues to have no objection to that hot tub.
Um, I think that if we were to approve this, I would want a, a sound attenuating fence along the property line so that it would at least cut the noise between the two. I don't, but I don't know what other board members feel about this. How do you, how do you, your?
A hot tub seems like such a non-necessity to me. I don't know why we would grant any variances.
Right, okay. Val, what is your?
For the board is why send me back to changing?
Right.
Because I thought we were going to change it so that it would meet code.
I was.
Or back things to the.
And we can go back to the minutes of that meeting and those.
I thought at the end of the discussion, and this was a long time ago, because this has been adjourned and adjourned and adjourned. But my recollection of the last time we talked about it was that it, we were proposing to move it farther away from the property line. So it was sort of adjacent to the art studio and you were going to explore that option with the client.
Right, we could not move it because of the health, because of the leaching pool. At some point, the client does intend to put a new sanitary system in on the property, which is currently operating on an old sanitary.
Right.
And so that location, we want to reserve to be able to do that when it is necessary and not be required to modify plumbing.
Well, I have my notes here on what I said, quote, I said no on hot tub or move it to code. Val whispered it.
Um, I, I'm happy to adjourn the hot tub. I know that the board did not have an issue with portico unless.
Right.
Um, I'm willing to separate them out and just have one approved and come back to you with the hot tub proposal and speak to the client about it again.
And then Val, what is your opinion?
Go for a vote. Maybe it's only me.
I look at it, it's more of a seating ingredient, not. I perceive this hot tub as not.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, but there's a septic system back in here somewhere.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Mr. Florio.
Okay. There we go. Anything, can you hear now?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
By definition, does meet pool. I already said this was a hit and I think that's the distinction.
Is, these are, these are precast, already constructed. They're not built.
It's a totally above ground.
It's totally above ground. There's nothing underground. The only thing technically, for all intents and purposes, the only thing that this board is technically approving is the concrete pad five feet from the line. With this set on top, again, it's a structure that, as we know, has a lifespan. It's not like a swimming pool that has a lifespan of twenty, thirty years. If you fix any contingents, the lifespan as a hot tub as an owner is probably about eight years max.
I, I perceive this as something you could, you know, what's the difference between this and buying a kiddie pool at, you know, Kmart and putting it in your backyard, you know, for kids to play in? You're moving it to seasonal and it's not an underground pool. So I think that, you know, with the leeway that it has a six foot fence and Mr. Chairman said you'd put some maybe sound attenuation and you have a supportive, uh, letter from the neighbor. So I didn't see this so much as a swimming pool within five feet. And that makes the distinction that no one could say, hey, you gave this application a five foot separation from the yard. It's a hot tub.
Right, and this board has approved hot tubs in front yards and all sorts of sort of precarious types of situations under the same type of premise that you're talking about.
It's not a permanent structure. Some of you could drag it, you know, a few feet away. But with that being said, does the board feel that five foot is adequate? And would you lean more towards, you know, a few more feet? Because that's a, that is a low margin and we've gotten pushed back before on.
How close does the, I, I don't know, it'd have to be ten feet from the leaching pool?
Yes.
So it looks like you're at ten feet.
Yeah, we're pretty, like, as I said, we, we analyzed this and we got as close as we possibly could.
Damon, do you, do you have any comments?
I mean, where we had left it was moving it back towards the, the studio, back in that corner. And if they, you know, if, if they're, if they do put a, you know, IA system or something in later on, then, then they can really look at moving it if they need to. I'm just hesitant to go for five feet. It's, it's, it's just a little close, even with the sound attenuating fence.
Right, well, one comment, not over speak, board member Brown, is leaching pool can't be at that building. It has to be five foot off that structure. So I would, I would reason to say, well, I can't the leaching pool go where the hot tub is and not go where the leaching pool is. And, and it's a wind, wind.
Right.
Well, the installation of IA system is not an easy, it's not an easy thing to accomplish.
But you can't put it where it is. That's, that's not legal. I just. And it's five, it needs five.
That's why, that's why we made these considerations.
So that's not going to fly, Board of Health.
Well, no, 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 but this is an existing system, isn't it, what you're showing?
We updated it, then has to be five feet away.
No, 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 I know that, but, but all I'm trying to say is this system that you've shown here is existing, correct?
Right.
So when you put in a new system, it obviously has to comply with the new code.
You may very well see that hot tub disappear at that point.
Yeah.
But we're, as, again, we're not prepared to do that. It was done, this was looked at in anticipation of doing that for environmental purposes at some point in your future. But that's not on the agenda currently. That's just something that the clients looked at and said, this is where we can fit it. And as it's not permanent, it's not something that, you know, that we're not going to review again at the point in time at which they decide they're going to put an IA system in and undertake that construction. Which is a significant construction on such a small lot back there. You're going to have to take a lot of things down in order to get back there.
Why doesn't have to go on a concrete slab?
Um, yeah.
Have to go on a concrete slab.
Otherwise it will sink into the ground. It has to be.
We'll have to move it later, so.
I mean, we've pushed back in the past on patios that have been within five feet of the setback, so.
It's just that a group of people will be sitting in the hot tub talking.
Right.
I mean, that's the, they, and there, there's water splashing in a hot tub. It's not a quiet thing. There's jets and it makes the noise.
There might be alcohol involved.
And there might be alcohol involved.
Yeah.
And it's just that it's, we have to just take into consideration that it is a noise factor. Let's, so let's just see, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to one thirty two Jermaine Avenue?
Nobody here and nobody online.
Nobody on Zoom, okay. So, um, do we feel that we want them to go back and look at this and see if they can find a spot that's farther away than five feet? Is that what we're thinking here?
That's what I'm thinking, but.
Yes.
Board should weigh in.
I mean, you sort of think that.
Well, what I'm trying to avoid as well and take just, and not to interrupt, but just take a look at the accessory structure setbacks about where, I mean, if you have a proposed location or a, a location that you think might work, we're willing to look at that. So if you look at the accessory structure setback for the rear yard on the survey, that's pretty indicative of the restrictions that we are facing.
I know, but I think.
Asking for additional variances from the rear yard and thereby creating a problem with the back neighbor in the back, so.
Right.
It's also this obligation, it's over max lot coverage too, so.
I mean, it's like, it's cramming a lot of stuff on a tiny parcel, which is something we always, you know, because I, I mean, that's one thing that we haven't. And that's part of your, your variance request, yeah, so.
That as well as the.
Yeah, the porch. Right.
That is very important to the client.
Right.
Um, right now, as you know, there's no access to the property other than.
Right, and I, I don't.
Through the front door.
We really don't have a problem with recreating that. Uh, so, Damon, do you have any further comments?
Uh, no.
Okay, so are, are you sort of thinking you want them to explore more options in terms of placement? Is that where you are feeling?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So do, um, it, it kind of looks like the majority of the board would like you to explore more options. You want us, do you want to withdraw the hot tub now and have us approve the porch and come back for the hot tub?
We maintain one on the calendar and just approve the porch for now? Yeah, you can do that. If we can separate.
We can separate.
Bifurcate, but that would be appreciated. That way we can come back to you without.
Okay, so we, we wouldn't close.
Can we give the hearing guidance at all? Now, many more feet would, would make this satisfactory.
Well, I, I, I don't think they can push it any closer to the leaching field. I, I don't, I don't know. It's, it's.
Well, I mean, well, it's above ground.
Right, that becomes our, our practical problems, so I appreciate the board taking.
Right, it's not a buried feature, so you can put it a little bit closer. And if the setback is fifteen feet, I'd be happy seeing at least fifty percent of that distance, so seven point five feet. Septic system.
I'm just asking them what they think is fair and.
I mean, the other thing. What kind of precedent do you, are you set? Because from now on.
Yeah.
Uh, this, there's nothing that makes this different than all the other ones that are going to come up. So whether you make it seven feet, ten feet, whatever, that's going to be the thing, not fifteen feet.
Right, can they, can they reduce it further? And I think that's a quite, a conversation that we had to, the applicant gets guidance.
I would, I'd be happier if it was closer to ten because that's, you know, some, something that we often do.
Can move it as close to ten as I can, but then approaching on the leaching pool setback.
Because it also could move a little bit toward the house and I know that might not be ideal for the, because, you know, for the client, but. If it moves further toward the house, it moves farther away from the leaching pool, you can bring it in to setback, yeah.
Understood, okay.
So let's, let's do that, so, um, we're, we won't close, Liz, we won't close, correct? We're just going to adjourn to the next meeting, but you're going to write a decision for, okay. So could I have a motion to approve the, um, the variances required for the front porch for one thirty two Jermaine Avenue? Leaving the hot tub variances to be approved or disapproved at a later date?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
So could I have a motion then to adjourn one thirty two Jermaine Avenue to our December sixteenth meeting?
Yep.
Sixteen.
I think it's for the board certification. I just communicated with the village attorney about, um, the coverage numbers and we have to delineate, we have to.
Separate them out.
To install, get her those numbers to separate.
Right.
So that's a good question because is the surveyor including any pathway stones greater than four feet?
No, no pathways, just, just what's legally required, so I'll have the amended survey and I'll get one. I'll have, get, I'll get the survey, it's actually one with, with the amended hot tub and the other with the, um, correct block coverage calculations for just the front.
Right.
Some surveyors might include pathways greater than four feet or, or basement.
We've had that conversation. I will have it with them again, but I'll have them.
You may have a front coverage and you think.
I will check on that again.
Great, okay, thank you. Um, so could I have a motion to adjourn one thirty two Jermaine Avenue to our December sixteenth meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, great, thank you, thank you. Uh, okay, next on the agenda is twenty three Main Street.
Twenty three Main Street? They.
Okay, so could I have a motion to adjourn twenty three Main Street to our December sixteenth meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to December.
I will second it.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next on the agenda is twenty two Oakland Avenue. Great, could you just state your name and address for the record?
We have drawn the Main Street representing twenty two Oakland LLC. All right, so we were last before this board in August. One of the items the board requested was spot elevations. I will tell you that the next day, I, myself and the property owner contacted the surveyor to order these spot elevations. We are still three months later waiting for the spot elevations. We think we may be getting them hopefully this week. Um, but because it's been such a long time since, uh, we, we presented, I didn't want to, um, I wanted to give, because we've done a lot of other things as well. Um, but the board had replied that it's been delayed some of the month. So besides the spot elevations, um, previous hearing, a few things came up. One was whether or not it was, uh, it was code compliant to have a, um, a basement or cellar that, um, extends, extends past the walls of, um, of a superstructure of a house. It is cracked. It's not, uh, not permitted, so we did, um, adjust them, um, our foundation plan to reflect that. So we hadn't been asking for any variances for it, but, uh, we would have had to, so we just eliminated it from the project. So you'll see the, the highest drawings, the amended penetration plan for the. Um, we still have an EBR as well there, which is, uh, it's required the variance for the penetration itself does not. Um, another item that was requested was a, was our septic system layout, uh, which we have done. We do not have the help of the red stamp yet, and we do have it laid out. Um, that is, um, in your file. Um, the only thing of note with the, um, septic system is that we had to adjust the location of the swimming pool, um, to get the twenty foot clearance required. Um, however, the, the new swimming pool location is still conforming. We were asking for a variance for that in the beginning and we saw it on, it's still a conforming location. Um, the next item that was, um, up for discussion was the, um, the existing garage, which we are proposing to demolish and, um, convert into a one car, existing large two car garage, which we're proposing to demolish and rebuild on a slightly smaller footprint as a one car garage and an ADU. Um, and it was, there was some concern about, uh, we had a, um, a dormer proposed in the sleeping loft in the garage. Even though that itself was conforming, there was some concern about the access to it. Um, so we just, just to simplify things, we just eliminated the dormer altogether and the loft, so it's just a, you know, it's just a, um, one floor, one level.
Well, it wasn't conforming because there's no two-story accessory structures.
Okay, well, whatever, it ain't great at some point because we just eliminated it. So, and then, um, there was also the need to renotice it because even though, uh, because it's a new structure, we need, um, and even though the, it's less non-conforming in terms of pyramid law. Um, as new, new structure than the existing structure, because it's a smaller building, um, we still needed to do that. Uh, understanding that that is partly predicated on the, um, spot elevations, but what I did, as with the main house, for the purpose of the noticing, I took what spot elevations I had and did some field measurements. So I can guarantee you that whatever we final numbers we come out with, with this spot, the additional spot elevations is going to be less than what was, uh, what we're requesting. Probably not very much, but, but a little bit less.
Yeah, I see spot, you have spots in the corners.
Yeah.
And the building is at nineteen, there's less than one foot variation in the backyard here.
Yes.
It's a dead flat parcel, but it does drop down to fourteen feet in the front yard.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Um, I don't see, do you?
Well, it's something we require on all of our projects, so I don't think we want to make any kind of an exception.
Contours on this land because it doesn't, they're not.
No, but we're just asking for spot elevations of the property.
I, I, I totally understand that and as I said, we, we've ordered the spot elevations. We're not arguing that, that, that's the thing. We're having trouble getting.
Getting, no, 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 I totally.
People over there to do it.
Totally understand. It's just that I don't think we want to eliminate that request because it's something we request on all projects that have pyramid variances. So that we have documented elevations to tie the pyramid to the site. Uh, so do you, uh, is there anything else?
Uh, no, those are really the, um, really the, the changes that we've, we've done. Um, the main house, I think there were some minor setback relief, like point one foot or something. Um, and a pyramid, uh, variance, uh, and then first the garage setbacks and, uh, yeah, it's a new structure and on a smaller footprint, still has setbacks and pyramid variances.
Hmm, yeah.
I think we have a block coverage or a main coverage. That hasn't changed from the last meeting.
So the, the proposed house has five bedrooms, correct?
Yes.
And we just want to make sure, I mean, it's a long driveway. The driveway is going to go all the way to the garage. We just want to make sure that there's space for adequate parking because I believe you need to have five spaces. Two for three plus two more, right?
No, no, I think we need four.
Four spaces, four spa, I'm sorry, four spaces.
And I think the ADU, um.
Right, four spaces.
Require one, but.
Right, but it would be nice.
We are keeping one day of the garage as a garage. It's still, you know, it, it, the existing building is huge. So even at the smaller footprint, it will still accommodate one car, you know, remaining free in the very long term.
Right.
Do you recall the discussion we had about moving the garage to make it more conforming, given that it's being torn down and it loses its grandfathered?
I do, but the reason why we are not doing that is that's sort of like the one spot where we can put the septic system. So, um, it's kind of tucked in that back corner there.
Have they moved somewhere else?
Yeah.
The open space between, uh.
Well, they have to have a twenty foot, um, setback between the septic system and the swimming pool. So that's limiting the, the location of the septic field.
Also, I just want to read the, um, village code under section three hundred dash nine point one two J. Um, I think it's five, does require a covenant be executed regarding the ownership of accessory apartments. Covenants and restrictions are supposed to be filed with every accessory apartment that's done in the village and I hope they are being done. And I would like the board to start making that a condition of your approval, just because it's a code requirement anyway. But I feel like I just want to make sure we're reminding the building department that those are required. And it's, uh, again, three hundred dash nine point one two J five A through. Let's see.
Well, because it has to be renewed, um, is it every two years now?
No, the, the covenant restriction runs over property that C and R is permanent, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because the whole intent of creating accessory apartments was for either affordable housing or for the owner to make it more affordable for the year. So it's restricting the use of these accessory apartments.
I have been advising my own clients who've been asking for these, that they need to do that covenant, whether or not it's being enforced, I can't, I can't tell you. But, uh, I, I certainly have been advising them about that.
Just for the board, it sounds like we're setting a precedent here, um, in terms of granting these significant setbacks.
Well, I mean, I, that's something we need to discuss. I mean, the, the thing about it is that it was a garage, which is a very benign use and now it's going to become a garage with.
Well, even if it was a garage, if it were being built from scratch, which in a sense, if you demolish it, it's as though you're building it from scratch.
Right.
We're okay with three point two feet from the property.
Well, that's a question.
For any new garage that gets built.
That's a question, that's a question. We haven't even talked about that.
We'll be hearing from other lawyers in the future.
Right, no, I know, but that's what we need to talk about.
Location.
Right.
You can't, you know, this is being repositioned and so it's moving from the pre-existing non-conforming footprint to new non-conforming footprint. You got to move it, might as well move it to a place where it conforms.
Right, that's my point.
That's right. It would mean eliminating the swimming pool. That's what it would mean.
I just want to point out that there's. I just want to point out that there's an argument that someone can make in the future, that you could build a garage. With a setback of six, nine from the back, three point two. And.
I mean, I'm not necessarily.
Lots, there's you always run out of space, so it's not like this is never going to happen again, because this is the only small lot in Sec Harbor.
I mean, I think if we, if it was just being rebuilt as a garage, it would be, you know. A different thing, but it's going to have a more intense use now, so it's something to consider. I don't know, it's it is very close to the property line, I think.
I don't know how to, in my mind, I just don't know how to differentiate it. For the future.
Well, you know, I mean. If we were not demolishing the garage, just keeping, we we could as of right, as far as I know, keep that existing building exactly as it is. And then I think, you know, the the reason why we needed to make the building smaller. Was because there is a limit for six hundred square feet for an ADU in any building, and that existing building is actually, including the garage area. Is actually over that six hundred square feet.
Well, six hundred square feet limit on an accessory structure.
Right.
I, you know, I'm just, you could drop the garage, don't have a garage, make it half as wide. Eliminate the pool. Figure out some other way to handle the septic system, or the board just will have to figure out, how do we? How does this not become the new standard? For a garage.
Well, I mean, it raises other questions, because. You know, even if this was an existing building and they stuck this ADU in it, is that something we would want to happen? Because now you have a living space three and six feet away from a property line, essentially a little house. That close to a property line. I mean, that's my concern is more. Right, then it could be farther away.
Probably ten feet or more.
Right. The garage, though, is.
Moved a little closer to the pool as well.
The garage, though, is is a more benign. I mean, nobody is. You know, living in the garage.
Yeah, that's, that isn't the point that I'm making.
Just the structure of.
This may just be me, the other board members may be fine with it.
Damon, do you have any thoughts?
Well, you know, my thoughts are, if if you're if you're rebuilding the garage, it should be a lot more conforming than it is now. And I do agree that, you know, converting it from a garage to a, you know, a a a living quarters, I'll say. Does create a lot more noise, is a different, is a different change of view, so I'm I'm very hesitant to do that, because again. You know, somebody comes in and says, oh, you already approved three, you know, three point three feet or six point nine feet, we can do that too, I don't think we want that.
Um, let's see if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak to this twenty-two Oakland Avenue. Any, Harry, anyone on Zoom? No.
I have a question for the applicant, is why? Is the reconstructed garage being relocated?
Well, it's it's not being relocated, it's. It's, I I I mean, it's only, it's literally taking the the five feet of that structure. That are, that is closest to Oakland Avenue and lopping off five feet of it, just shifting that front wall back five feet. Or six feet, whatever, whatever it is, it's. Everything else about this, the the roof is the the same roof, it's 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 the same building, it's just five feet short.
They have to make it smaller, because it has to be under six hundred square.
So the location wouldn't come into question. Because you're using the existing footprint, but you're just like in the front portion off.
It would be better, though, if you moved it to the front and then was farther away from the other property line, instead of lopping off the front five, lop off the rear.
Right. Because that'll decrease the variance request.
Right.
And that would make the six point eight feet turn into eleven point eight feet. Which.
It's better, well, it all needs to be ten feet.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
So. I mean, that would eliminate the variance on the rear property line. If they shift this, this is the existing line of the the existing structure, if they shifted it this way, that eliminates one variance.
Could you put the septic system underneath the driveway and just relocate the pool a little bit?
You know, we we really wanted to have the the septic system in the front there, there just wasn't quite enough space for it, and also the distance from. The ADU too started to become an issue for putting it in the front. I don't think in the side there is enough room for it, it's not so much being under the driveway, it's it's the ten foot offset from the. From the cellar walls, the foundation walls, that and the five foot offset between the property line that is better. The issues there.
I mean, could you explore turning the pool ninety degrees and seeing if you can relocate the septic system, so they could move the. Garage farther away, I mean, it it sounds like we'd be more in favor of of leaving the the street side of the garage and chopping off the backside. And then if you turn the swimming pool ninety degrees, could you adjust the. The garage farther away from the south property line? Because I mean, the closer you get to ten feet, and maybe you can't get to ten feet, but maybe you get to eight feet or something, it would be much more palatable than. Three point two feet, I don't know what other board members feel about something like that. Or eliminate the garage.
Um, a question for you. Just so I have some feedback for the property owner. If if this building, if we decided to do this building as either one, either garage or a ADU, right? I, would I be correct in saying that this board would would like to see if it's an ADU use be completely conforming to setbacks?
Yes.
As a new, as a new, rather than trying to. Work with the shape of the existing building, just making it smaller, just just a completely new structure, right?
However, you chose a shape, you chose your reduction on the side where. You can make it conforming if you reduce on the rear, but you reduced on the front of it facing the pool, because if you took off the five feet from the tail end of this building. That variance is gone, and you get the.
Yes, but but I I think I think the bigger issue is, I mean, we're on the back here, we're already at seven feet, that's not such a big deal. You know, to make that ten feet, but the other on the side there is. You know, and maybe I'm arguing against myself here, we're only at three point two feet, and this it seems like the side is the bigger issue and the bigger variance there, and that's harder to. That's harder to change, right?
I mean, they.
Shifting this building three feet forward to the rear yard, that's no problem at all, I don't think it even makes an issue with the septic system. It's just moving it over from the side there that is the problem, so my thinking is that this is going to have to be a narrower building. Which means it's going to have to either be a garage or a ADU, because I don't think we can fit both of those. Things in a, just from a configuration standpoint.
But maybe it can be a garage with some exterior storage, maybe it's, I mean, an ADU with some exterior storage.
Well, the three point two doesn't seem to be an issue, it's on the road, it's right on, no, no, I'm sorry, not the road, it's near.
Yeah, no, I think the three point two is too close, yeah, because it's on the property line.
Is the whole thing being reconstructed?
The whole thing's been rebuilt, so it's a whole new building.
So why not push it over a little bit more?
Well, it because of the septic system, but I would I would try exploring turning the pool or something, I mean.
This way.
I think there's a little bit more explanation, uh, exploration that needs to happen here to try to get it, the garage to be more conforming. I think that's where we're falling.
Or I would need an argument why this is so exceptional that it could never be used.
Right.
As precedent for the future, that's my, I don't have a particular objection to this particular project, it just sets a.
Yeah, but there's, it's very hard to just, how are we going to distinguish it? No, but that's what I mean.
Somebody could think of a way to distinguish it, that might.
I I think we need to reduce that to seven feet, eight feet.
Right.
Well.
Not three point two.
Just thinking about other precedents is here, and this is a question I have for you, just picking out some projects I have coming down the road. What happens in a situation where you have a non-conforming building? That is in such bad condition that it needs to, you know, it's not even an option, it just needs to be be built, because it's falling down and it's close to.
But I believe this, that Liz, isn't there exception in the code for that? If the if, well, if your house burns down.
Or if the building is a is a danger to the.
Yeah.
Community, because it's going to fall down.
That's different.
That's different.
Yeah, that's.
Your grandfathered for those. Pre pre-existings.
The reason why something like this wouldn't conform is, it wouldn't conform to that is because it's, I mean. In all honesty, the building is not in any immediate danger of falling down, it's, you know, perfectly solid structure, it's just. Unfortunately not in a conforming location.
I mean, if you were going to just reuse the building, that would be, we would be looking at this differently.
Yeah. So it's a combination of altering the footprint and changing the use, that is the objection, or the concern?
The concern, yes.
Okay.
Well, there's being demolished.
Well, it's being demolished and.
To me, it's not even changing the use so much, it's that it's being demolished, so you lose your grandfathered.
Right. Let's talk about the house a minute, so we. Um, is, how is everybody feeling about the house itself, just so that Anthony knows it?
I have, myself, I have no comments on the house and would grant the variances.
Out of the rest of the board members feel the. Yeah, Damon, do you have any?
No, I don't have any issues with the house.
I mean, it looks, there's that weird addition in the back, and this looks much nicer than. So. Okay, so do you have, you confused enough now?
Let's see here, I'm just trying to think about moving forward here. If there are no issues with the main house. And if we don't change the design for the garage. Ever become so it's completely conforming. It doesn't, it doesn't require any variances, you know, if we move the the setbacks or we just decide to keep the existing building as is. Would we need to come back here for that?
No. Well.
Wouldn't need any variances.
If you don't need any variances, no, but you still need variances for the house, so we'd have to.
So what I, I guess what I'm saying in here is, we get a conditional people for the house.
It's up to Liz. Do you want us to, the the, what Anthony is asking is us to break out the garage building as a separate.
It's okay, but like, we keep, we keep doing this, we're going to have two decisions on it.
No, 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 I know.
It's getting to the point where I did that for twenty-one bickers, and now you want to do this other one, and it just gets to be a little bit hard to. For record, in the in the building department, it gets to be a little bit much.
I mean, I think that since it's a whole. Right, but I think that since it's a whole project, we should be, you know, not. He's, unless you want to withdraw the garage, and then it's a totally separate application. Right, so I I I think the better solution would be to just adjourn it and.
And then if you have, you do have an indication that you could. Put to your client that the board has no problem with the house, I mean.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful, so.
Right, well, I was quick to say no, because the village trustees, the village board of trustees encourages these things. And we have had cases of pre-existing non-conforming, and those locations have held. But you're, you know, reconstructing something that that gives latitude to say, well, why can't you do it a different way? And I think that's the distinction here, so. You know, to decrease that variance.
Great, so any any other comments? Will will adjourn?
What may be difficult here for one more thing, if you don't mind. If tomorrow morning I call my, call the homeowner, tell him what happened tonight, and he says to you. Okay, that's great, we got our variances we need for the house, let's just do something completely conforming for the garage and not come back to you, and I. Can I ask Liz to make a decision for that for the next hearing? If you if you follow what I'm saying.
Well, that would be, well, no, but that would be. We would have to officially run a conditional approval, but we would have to then withdraw that part of the project. Which which we don't know if you want to do or not to, we can't really do that. Unless we segment the project again, which we just really want to. Keep doing that, I mean, it just makes more work for Liz. It's good records. Right, exactly. Right, no, I mean, it's one property, it's one project, it should be one, I mean, if you're coming in, I, six months apart or something, it would be very different. So, um, let's adjourn this to the to the next meeting, so could I have a motion? To adjourn twenty-two Oakland Avenue toward December sixteenth meet.
Yes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, great, thank.
The next one is request.
Okay. So could I have a a motion to adjourn thirty-one Madison Street to our. December sixteenth meet?
I'll make a motion to adjourn thirty-one Madison to the December meeting, all in favor?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
So now we're on to new business. And. The only one on the agenda is four fourteen. Main Street. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for four fourteen Main Street?
Motion open.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, you just take your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name's Denise Shurn, I'm the attorney to the applicant. Um, this is an applicant to renovate and expand an existing.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Ms. Shown, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Yeah, so just remember, the microphone is above you, unfortunately.
Just a housekeeping issue there that puts on notice. I, everyone that we had two witnesses. Pyramid variance. Allow this fifteen room. So ninety-six cubic feet down to east five cubic feet, which is a reduction of eleven cubic feet, but we were told we needed. So. Um, so we did apply for it. Also, I understand that. We're subject to a fifty percent limit on the expansion of modern structures. The only non-conformity I could find with this property is the existing improvement into pyramid. Which is that ninety-six cubic feet that I mentioned. The expansion that we're proposing is fifteen thousand. One thousand five hundred feet strictly, the existing structure is one thousand five hundred. Sorry, I heard her say.
So what's the percentage?
Sorry, let me start over. Relics, we have an addition of one thousand five hundred sixty-two square feet to a house that is five, one thousand five hundred eighty-six. Feet and violation of fifty percent, which would be a ninety-eight percent. Expansion.
Is I was just, can you just give us those numbers again?
Sure. Uh, the addition is one thousand five hundred sixty-two.
Okay.
Existing house, one thousand five hundred eighty-six.
Great, and what is the allowable GFA? For the property?
In front of me, I know we're below. I don't think it's on any of these.
So the current, which the propose, the proposed GFA is going to be three thousand one hundred forty-eight, is that what? Okay.
So, um, this property is located, as I said, at fourteen street. When you're coming in Sec Harbor on the bridge next to the side of the turnpike, it's on that hand side, it's sort of a dilapidated building. Definitely needs a little love. This proposal is going to renovate that structure and put an inch beyond the back, a two-story addition. Uh, so also proposing a swimming pool and accessory well, even if this property is unique, and that. this property is unique and that it's a through lot, so it goes from Main Street all the way to Fordham. So the ADU is actually going to be facing Fordham. So in terms of orientation, it's sort of perfect in the sense that the ADU is going to be facing a street instead of, um, the back of the house. Um, there's a standard in the code for the ADUs that says, do you mind if I take a seat? I will speak loud next.
Yeah, of course.
There's a provision in the standards, um, for ADUs that, um, you try to orient your structure toward the street and make it look like a single family residence to the greatest degree possible. I would argue that in this case, the proposal is doing just that. The ADU spacing Fordham Street, there is seventy five feet of deep. I'm sorry, sixty feet of frontage on Fordham. So it'll fit nicely, uh, in the community on Fordham, which is sort of a modest, um, community already. So I think this, um, small accessory structure will fit in quite well there. Um, the reason that we need the variance for being a front yard is because we are on that through lot, so we don't have a backyard. So there's nowhere on this property to put an accessory structure without being in a technical front yard, even though we're situated behind the house. As the board knows, uh, you must pay the benefit to the applicant against the detriment to the community. We would argue that there's, um, no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Um, by these proposals, the proposed one story accessory unit and pool are located in the front yard, as we said, only due to the fact that the parcel is burdened by two front yards, Fordham and Main Street. Do you are proposed in a functional backyard of the property and it would not be suitable to locate either accessory structure on the Main Street side? And of course, there's no room there, um, but you'd be in, in the literal front yard at that point. Um, so this is the best place for it on the lot. Additionally, these bringing properties on Fordham and Main Street also have accessory structures, um, in the rear of their houses, um, which front on Fordham. Um, the standard that I was mentioning before, it's applicable to all accessory dwelling. Provides that any entryway or other exterior feature of split lighting in the R twenty zoning district with an accessory apartment will be designed and maintained so as to appear as a single family resident to the extent reasonably useful. In this case, the fact that this lot is a through lot gives the applicant the opportunity to completely base the unit for the street, giving the appearance of modest single family dwellings that fits in well with a charming and modest construction along Fordham Street. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method which is feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the requested variance. Uh, because we're burdened by the two front yards, um, we do have to ask you for a variance for the ADU and the swimming pool. And because this is technically considered a nonconforming structure, even though it does need setbacks, um, and it's not over on lot coverage. Um, we're, uh, subject to the fifty percent rule. Um, and so our three thousand one hundred and thirty eight square foot residence does need a variance from the fifty percent rule. Um, and we also reach the residences proximity to the lot line. It's difficult to define a home that does not infringe upon the pyramid law. However, in this case, the violation is actually decreasing inside it by eleven cubic feet. The proposed variance will not have an adverse impact on the environment. There is a, uh, part, part of this project is the installation of a new IA system, reducing sanitary uh, nitrogen, reducing sanitary system and installation of dry wells containing water on site. What is proposed will be consistent with the neighborhood and adequately screen neighboring properties. This request is self-created, the hardship. Um, however, in order to comply with the village code, a variance must be sought since the subject property has two road franchises. Therefore, the location of what is proposed becomes the front yard, thus triggering the need for a variance for any proposed accessory structure. Furthermore, was being proposed common amenities throughout this neighborhood. I understand if the ADUs are amenities or accessory structures that if there was a board would like to, is encouraging people to apply for, um, and so, uh, for that reason, um, we would state that the fact that the hardship is self-created um, is not determinative and should not, um, be the basis for denial of the application. In some, we believe that the benefit to the applicant in being permitted to expand the residence at a swimming pool and ADU is significant, while the detriment to the names of the appears to be minimal at best.
Great, thank you. So, um, from what I figured out, your, um, allowable GFA is three thousand one hundred fifty two.
Okay.
And you're at three thousand one hundred forty eight. So, just so everybody's aware, we're pushing the limit on the GFA. Um, it is a big parcel. Um, the other question that I had was, and this is something for Liz, the the dimension of the proposed accessory building is five hundred ninety four point eight. Um, but there's a, also a covered porch in addition to that. Does the porch, the porch, I'm assuming is roofed, so that has to comply with the six hundred square foot limit. So your thing is a little bit too big.
Oh, okay, so the covered porch is part of the.
Well, it's, it's roofed. Well, I don't know. It's not GFA. We're talking about an accessory structure of an accessory structure, which is all the roofed area, I believe. It's not the same as GFA, which is living space. They might have to reduce either the porch or your accessory structure.
I guess, or we could take the cover, I guess, off.
Right, if it doesn't have a cover, then it's not
Okay.
a building or a structure, right?
Or ask for a variance?
Right. Well, do we want to give a variance for an accessory structure to be over six hundred square feet?
We don't.
Right, well, there you go.
No, I said.
Well, I don't know. That's a question.
Oh, oh.
I don't know. Um, but we have to do something to make it comply.
Okay.
Um, either it has, we have to give a variance for it, but we don't know what the number is because there's no number on the porch.
And we're doing the same thing.
Um, so those were just a couple of things that I noticed. I mean, otherwise, it's basically.
What about the covered entry? Does that need to be included as well?
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's a roof. The, the code is generally about roofed areas are considered part of the square footage. Right? I mean, I'm in.
I don't know if you. Yeah, I just didn't call it out specifically for accessory structures, that's all.
Yeah, well, I think our code is different than some municipality called porch accessory and not heated living space. So this code has a little, I mean, it's a little vague.
It's more vague, so it, it, it may be not a correct interpretation. I don't know. I guess that's a question.
It's a building inspector interpretation. The other side of it, because you know, the FAR, they'll do for your porch, if your house, you get the aggregate to get your maximum, but you're allowed fifteen percent of the primary to get your accessory. And here we don't have the distinction. We just have six hundred square feet, but it doesn't have a footnote like, oh, porch is not included or included.
Right.
Now, that's the inspector's interpretation. Yeah.
An interpretation from ten, um.
Yeah, I would interpret it that it.
Is, is that what we want to happen?
That it would be walled space, right?
Because the porch could add mass and scale to a building that may not want to have that mass and scale.
Because then we're saying that you could have a six hundred square foot accessory building with an unlimited porch.
Five hundred square foot porch. So we, I think that's important to connect.
We're trying to park me back here.
Inspector.
I mean, or that's what, now, I think that we want that roofed area. Oh, oh. Um, you have to, um, be careful not to put your paper on the microphone, sorry. Um, I don't know if we want to have that, open that can of worms, because then.
Right.
I know that in East Hampton, it's very strict. You, you, the six hundred square foot is or what, I think it's six hundred square foot also. It is, it's, it's a porch or it's that accessory building. It doesn't matter. It's all one thing.
And they include the roof. If you go two, greater than a two foot overhang, bang, the whole roof starts to count towards square footage.
Right.
So, um, I think that we should carry that interpretation.
Okay.
Yeah.
So
I agree.
You either eliminate the porch roof or you could reduce the size of the, because you're still under, um, you're five ninety four point eight, so you still have a little bit of leeway. So you could either, you, that's a decision for you guys to make.
Right.
Um, I mean, otherwise, basically, the project does what we very often like happening on these through um, lots where we put a pool in. There's a building between the pool and the street, so you're not looking at this.
And the building fits in with the streetscape as opposed to being a garage that interrupts the streetscape of residences. I like that a lot.
Because the, on that street, there are a lot of different scaled structures and this scale of this structure will not be out of, yeah, it fits in with the character of the neighborhood. So I think the general, um, uh, design direction for this all seems very good.
Is there a floor plan for this accessory building? Because it not insinuating, but it looks like a glorified pool house. And I like to see that a bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, and all of that.
You guys were given this a while ago.
Far back.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I couldn't find this on any agenda.
Yes.
I have all the agendas for a year and I looked, I couldn't find one.
You got, we, I think you were during the.
Maybe I wasn't on the board then.
But if you could show Denise, I feel, I would feel more comfortable. It's like seeing the floor plan, just to say that this, you know, is, because our pool house cap is two hundred square feet and if you do have to go back to your client and say, we have to take the porch off, um, I'd like to see the floor plan of the structure.
That's a good point. Pardon?
We, we noticed it.
Yeah.
And then, in the meantime, when it was being, it wasn't being noticed until our meeting.
Yeah.
It was pulled off because it needed harbor committee, but you guys got it in your packet.
Did you go to harbor committee for this?
Yeah, we're in harbor.
Okay.
We just got the first comment letter.
Yeah, alright.
Could I ask a question related to the great growth and over from fifty percent allowed to, and it's ninety eight percent. What is it again that makes this nonconforming?
So the only nonconformity I can find on the existing structure is the existing encroachment into the pyramid law, which into the pyramid line, which is.
That's the eighty five cubic feet.
That's right.
On the bottom, so, bottom right hand. So if we were
Yeah.
going to grant a favorable to keep it from seeming pretty excessive, to go from fifty percent to ninety eight percent, we could note in the decision that the whole thing revolves around an eighty five cubic feet pyramid variance, which we typically would easily grant that.
Yes.
So that, that, that wouldn't become a precedent that now you can always greatly exceed the fifty percent, I think.
Right, exactly. I think that's a good.
And that, yeah, that's noted on the drawing on the screen. You can see the pyramid through that one story porch.
Right.
And it's not a huge infraction, but it is an infraction.
Floor plans are in this packet, um.
No, I just meant for precedent purposes. Somebody would have to come with this situation and only, their only nonconformity would be a very tiny pyramid variance as opposed to a setback from the property line or something. Thanks.
I mean, this also is not in the historic district. It's just outside. Um, I mean, they're, if they're adding, you know, a fairly good size addition and, but it's still under the allowable GFA.
Right.
So, Damon, do you have any comments or concern?
No, I mean, it's, uh, no, no concerns that have been already expressed.
Great. Monica, anything?
No.
No, great.
There's, that's a great benefit to Fordham Street.
It's better than.
Yeah, it seems like there's a hole in it.
To fill up that empty space that was just, um.
It's like there's a lot.
Woods and stuff.
Yeah, I think it's that end, right?
So. I did tell Denise that if she, if the board was amenable, um, and it has to be renoticed, we could still renotice it um, for the next meeting, open it and then close it, but I could have a written decision ready if the board was inclined to do that.
Okay, but first, let's see if there's anyone, right, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to, um,
No, I'm sorry.
Four fourteen Main Street? No one here? No one on Zoom? No one, no one at all? Okay, um, so, um, a- any other comments or concerns from the board? I mean, so, except for the question about the size of the accessory structure, which you're going to make comply with the six hundred square feet one way or another, so that's not going to be a variance issue. Um, does anybody have any problem with variances?
No.
No?
No.
No? No? Okay, so.
We tie eliminating the junkyard, two doors down from this property to this decision? That was a joke. But there's a completely illegal property that I just want to have on the record that the village ought to be able to do something about that. There have been fires there. It's filled from one end of the lot to the other with junk. It looks like it should be at the end of a dirt road, two hundred miles upstate, not in the middle of a residential area where most of the houses there, you could tell that people are going to great pains to keep their houses perfectly maintained.
Is it?
And then suddenly you come to that disgrace. Okay, that's the end of mine.
Code enforcement.
No, no clutter in the front yard.
I just wondered if, if anything could start here that we could.
That's not our, that's not our, that's not our.
Code enforcement?
I don't think it's a good thing that the, the code enforcement watches this meeting.
I'll write a letter to the.
Yes, I'll sign with you.
Okay.
So.
I'm fine with this.
Code enforcement right now.
So you, you want us to adjourn? We'll, we'll write it, have you write a decision, but not close, correct?
Right.
Okay, so could I have a motion to adjourn four fourteen Main Street to our, um, December sixteenth meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
And now could I have a motion to?
All in favor? Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Okay, um, now could I have a motion to, to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for four fourteen Main Street for our next meeting?
Yes.
Second?
Say, I'll make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to.
To instruct our attorney to write a favorable.
To instruct our attorney to make a favorable.
Write a favorable decision.
Second?
Decision, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, on to decisions.
First one is three ninety nine Main Street. Three ninety nine Main Street, we'll see. And then just, that's all kind of meaningful, distinct, single family residence and conversion of the detached studio.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Liz. I'm having trouble hearing you. The microphone's a little staticky today.
Yeah, that's pretty bad.
Go and sit here, Liz, and, and read it.
Oh, that's maybe a better idea, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so the decision is for two ninety nine Main Street, um, and it's for a proposed renovation of an existing single family residence, the conversion of the detached studio to an accessory apartment and construction of a swimming pool. Required, uh, multiple variances from the board. The property is eight thousand seven hundred thirty three square feet, located in the R twenty zoning district. Where twenty thousand square feet are required. It's forty feet wide, where a hundred feet is required. And for the, um, reasons set forth in the written determination, the board determined to grant the variances based on the five car test, um. Carrie, I do need you to check the date of the approved plans I have prepared by, uh, architect Anthony Vermeidwah dated August eighth, twenty twenty five, but can you make sure that's the last date we have where they sign it? Thank you. And then also.
Yeah, it's because it was all in front of.
Okay, yeah. Also, there's, uh, an added condition for the board's consideration, um, to require the covenant that I mentioned earlier, which is required in the code for all accessory apartments. I mean, that is a condition as well.
Yeah.
Great, uh, could I have a motion to approve the decision as written for two ninety nine Main Street?
I'll make a motion to approve two ninety nine Main Street.
Second?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. The next, uh, one on the agenda is one sixty two Bay Street.
So this is by the property located at one sixty two Bay Street. This is to construct six hundred and ninety one square foot addition to the existing single family residence and rebuild an existing deck with a pergola. Required variances under, uh, village code section three hundred twelve point six B one A to allow for the proposed, uh, growth of area of the nonconforming residence to expand by forty percent, or being at fifty percent. Board was, uh, testing for the reason set forth through the nominations, committing to the variances.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the, the decision for one sixty two Bay Street as written?
Motion to approve.
Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Next is two sixty-three Redwood Road. We kept you busy this.
The property located at two sixty-three Redwood Road, this is to construct first and second story additions to the existing residence, requiring variances. To allow, first, uh, originally it asked for a second story where an existing attached garage to, uh, where accessory structures are permitted to have one story. Or be fifteen feet height, and then it also asked for the proposed addition to be thirty feet from the front yard or thirty-five feet required. It also asks for a lot coverage variance and, uh, pyramid variance, you know, twenty thirty-three cubic feet. After hearing feedback from the board, uh, the applicant was able to eliminate the first variance because it was an attached garage. It did not require that variance. Um, it's a detached garage it would have. And then also it reduced the, um, pyramid request from two hundred thirty-three to, I believe, a hundred thirty-six cubic feet. Therefore, for the reasons that were in the written determination, the board found it met five-part test and to grant variances.
Great. Could I have a motion to, um, approve the decision for two sixty-three Redwood Road as written?
Motion to.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And the last one is twenty-one Vickers Street.
This is, um, the second, um, decision for twenty-one Vickers Street, or one of the prior meeting. And this is to construct the proposed accessory apartment above the garage. Uh, variances were sought, uh, to allow the garage to be a, um, nineteen point five feet, where fifteen feet permitted. And then also for the proposed accessory apartment to intrude into the pyramid. It's I think one thousand four hundred fifty-five cubic feet for zero, um. Cubic feet is permitted, uh, therefore variance are required for same. And the prior determination was. See. This, I decision dated October twenty, twenty twenty-five, a branch of approval to get director proposed seven hundred and ten square foot addition for the existing residence requiring variances, uh, dimensional variances. Only. So for the reasons set forth in the written decision, the board determined to grant the variances listed in this decision.
Great. Could I have a motion to approve twenty-one, the decision for twenty-one Vickers Street as written?
I'll make a motion to.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you just check this plan as well for the group to sort of get the last of the eyes on this twenty twenty-five, that might not be.
Great. Could I have a motion to close to Hubble Kingdom for the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Sag Harbor?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Bye.
Hi, Damon.
Bye.
Bye-bye.